Indian River Connections brings you the first source you can watch for truth on. Board decisions in Indian River County. The Board Report, where taxpayers and policymakers intersect. Be sure to subscribe on your favorite platform to get notified when we go live on Fridays at 7:00 PM. Visit IndianRiverConnections.com for more. Sponsored by Gus Curran's House of Champions.
Hello, everyone. Welcome back to the Board Report brought to you by Indian River Connections. I'm Joanne Benford, and today my guest co-host is going to be Thomas Augustus, editor in chief of the Sunshine Journal.
Hey, Joanne, how are you?
Doing good. How are you?
I'm good. Thank you for having me.
Yes, it's a pleasure to host the show with you today.
What have we got going on this evening on the Board Report? It's a lot of stuff happening.
Yeah, there is. So we're going to be diving into the school board meeting, you know, do a little talk about what's going on. Yeah, and you know, teachers are back in the classrooms already doing their, you know, programs with the professional development training to get ready for school, getting their classrooms ready. And then we're going to just introduce the Florida, the Florida's new education commissioner.
Anastasio Kamutzas?
Yeah.
Kamutzas. I'm sorry, I butchered his name. They just call him Stasi.
Yeah, so there's a lot going on, you know, even with homeschool parents. I remember Dyer was mentioning something on the school board meeting about how he thinks that's affecting some of the FTE funding and the budget. So that's, we can talk about that. We're going to have our, our welcome, our guests back, you know, returning guests today are going to be Jennifer Pippin, Indian River County Moms for Liberty Chairman, and again, Kevin McDonald, our previous school board member.
Oh, cool. That'll be fun. So let's do that and then probably get into some city stuff again, of course.
Yeah.
Updates around there, possibly.
Yeah, definitely. So I just wanted to throw this up here so everybody who doesn't know who Stasi is, oh, who has got Canastasio. Let's take a look. This is our new education commissioner.
You know what I like about him? I mean, since some of these people have left the, the DeSantis administration, like Moody's gone on to the House or whatever, and others have left, you know, Moody was replaced by a really conservative guy in Othmeyer. And, you know, Manny Diaz, very conservative. This guy was all of Manny Diaz's policy people. He was one of the main policy guys. He's very conservative. It's just real common sense people coming in that are just, they don't take any guff, they have very good boundaries, and they really are looking out for the people. So I just love what DeSantis is doing here in his second term.
Yeah, I really love that we still have DeSantis, and this is why I fought so hard for him to not be president. I was like, Florida still needs DeSantis. And it just feels so fresh having all these great conservatives coming into office to keep the momentum going. This is what we need, you know, it's our kids needed, our next generation needs this. So it's so important.
And Jen's going to bring some news about what he's been doing, just even broke today. So maybe we should go to the commercial and bring those guys on.
Yeah, so everybody, if you've missed our show last week, stick around to find out the latest updates on local news in Indian River County. And before we dive in deeper, thank you to our sponsor, Gus Curran's House of Champions.
Tired of the same old workout? Come knock out your fitness goals at Gus Curran's House of Champions. Founded in 1996, right here in Vero Beach, Florida, our Hall of Fame trainers will push you to your limits and beyond. Whether you're a beginner or a pro, we have the perfect class for you, including the one-of-a-kind Rocksteady Parkinson's training. So come join the fight and unleash the champion inside you. Give them a call, 772-713-1157, or go to GCHouseofChampions.com.
Welcome back, everybody, to the Board Report. We've got myself, Joanne Benford, and our co-host today is Tom Augustus, editor in chief of the Sunshine Journal.
How y'all doing? Let's bring on the guests, Jennifer Pippin and Kevin, Kevin McDonald. Where are those guys at?
Hey, guys.
Hey.
Hey.
Happy Saturday.
It is.
Yeah, so let's move up. Yeah, let's move on to those school board updates. You know, Jen, the teachers are excited, they're getting, they're in their classrooms now, getting everything ready for the new curriculum. We've got a lot going on campus during these workshops that they're doing. And so it's really an exciting time for the classroom teachers right now. So Jen, and I want to let you know, I appreciate everything that you do with all the oversight that you offer. You go in there and you give kudos to more, you know, on the good things that he's done, but you're always sticking on top of it. And I really love that you bring these topics up because we need them brought up. And I want to know, what kind of oversight are we going to look at here coming up in the new year?
Yeah, so great question. Thank you again so much for having me on, and I'm happy to be with you all. And I know three out of the four were at the school board meetings, so they're going to know exactly what I'm talking about. But yeah, I mean, so we've moved up in the district. We're to five now out of the 67 counties. Huge, huge change. And, you know, like I said in my speech, you know, it's just not Moms for Liberty to think. It's all the teachers and the administration and Dr. Moore. But, you know, Moms for Liberty had a huge hand in making, you know, policy changes and code of conduct changes. And, you know, I just was really, you know, thankful for all of our parents, grandparents, and community members that have been working so hard. So hopefully, this will be another great year, and even if we don't increase in rankings, I hope that we increase in scores. Because, you know, at the end of the day, it is, you know, nice to be, you know, two, three, four, five in the state. But our, you know, scores really need to increase like we did, you know, this year. So, and, you know, like you said with Dr. Moore, as hard as we are on them, and, you know, we want, you know, higher expectations for our community, you have to say thank you when you do get that satisfaction or you do get that, you know, those grades that you were looking for. So like I said, as much as you give them a hard time, you have to thank them as well for the work that they've done.
You know, Jen, it's really interesting because Moms for Liberty has been intimately involved with the discipline policy, intimately involved in curriculum selection, obviously, the book challenges with the libraries. It all started with the COVID and the masking and undoing that, the illegality of that and the parental rights involved there. Do you believe that, in your heart of hearts, that what you guys, what we've done and what you guys have done is just really reflective of this fifth ranking in the state?
I absolutely do, Thomas. And the reason why is because, you know, we have an organization full of parents. So parents have the fundamental right over their children. You know, we've championed legislation where the money follows the child. So now the public schools have to listen to the parents, they have to listen to the families, or they're going to go anywhere else to have their children educated. And, you know, before, you know, if you're going back to COVID times, that wasn't the case. You know, people weren't able to, you know, homeschool their children because they couldn't afford it or put them in a private school because they couldn't afford it. And I know that's Kevin's wheelhouse with, you know, school choice and knowing how that works. But I really do think that Moms for Liberty had a huge hand in that because we saw what was wrong, we saw what was broken, and we fixed it. We didn't bow to the teachers' union, we didn't bow down to the school board that didn't listen to us, the superintendent in the beginning that didn't listen to us. We continued that charge, and look where it's gotten us. It's gotten us, you know, better, better math scores, better English language art scores, and our children are excelling. And I do feel that Moms for Liberty had a hand in that.
Yeah, there were members of Moms for Liberty and all these various committees that had major input, that had their recommendations as the majority, and as a result, we've seen changes.
Yeah, and how do you feel about that, Kevin? You know, we're fifth in ranking, but how do you feel about them, the way the sliding score is working? That's, and I put it that way because it kind of feels that way. It feels like the school districts are all on a sliding score so that they can grade better. Am I wrong?
No, that's the way it's set up. It's a, they're rated on a relative scale, just like a lot of class grades are, so that there will always be As, there will always be Bs and Cs. There's some benefit to that. Basically, what that says is we've got one of the nicest houses in a bad block.
It's not just a block. It's getting better.
It's the whole dang town. The country's bad. So in fact, when I was at the meeting, I mean, I had challenged him last year to that, given the results we had a year ago, that he should be number one next year. And he made mention of that during the, during the workshop, and I reminded him of it just before the meeting. And I mentioned it because I think there's no reason we can't be number one in this bad block. Florida's, and Florida's actually become a pretty good block compared to the rest of the country. And right now, pretty good is, you know, 60 to 65 to 70%, you know, at proper grade level. So that's not fantastic.
Less than that, actually.
Well, yeah, depending on which, which, which measure you look at. Optimistically, yeah. But the rest of the country is really horrible. I checked, and there is a rating system that gives A, Bs, Cs. We are at A-, and the As and A+ is a count for the top 10%. So if we can raise ours up a little bit better, we can be in the top 10% of the country. Now, that would start to be something really to, I mean, we should be a whole lot better, but if everyone else in the country is not so bright, you know, it's not a bad place to be.
Yeah, for, you know, one of the things that hit home to me was that Dodger Town Elementary got an A.
Yep.
But the most important metric that we measure for English language arts is third grade proficiency, and their proficiency is at a 47%. The school still got an A because it measured in other areas higher, and in all relative together, made it an A school. Congratulations on the A, but those readings are still below 50% on third grade, where if, you know, we say if they're not reading proficient by third grade, they're not going to read proficient for the rest of their school, you know, grade school career. And that's pretty tough consequences.
So when do they start lowering the expectations for college-level students? Because all these kids are going to have to go, you know, a good percentage of them are either going to go to college or not.
It's not when. It's not when. You've got kids going into Harvard and Princeton that are taking remedial math courses because they don't, they don't have the ability to qualify to enter a college. They bring them in, and they're taking remedial classes in college. Now.
Yeah. Kevin, can you speak to the comment that David Dyer made in the workshop regarding the voucher system and what it's doing to the state and what he called a sleight of hand in budgeting on the state? I mean, I brought this up myself at this school board meeting, but can you just explain that?
Yeah, he did. I actually talked to him after the school board meeting and sort of reiterated. Their viewpoint, his, and I think he's, the viewpoint of those who share that, is that it's sort of like, if you've got a family and, you know, two of the kids leave for years and dad's supporting the other ones with a pot of money, and two of the kids come back and he starts splitting the money with them, they're upset that, hey, we've gotten, we've gotten access to the pot exclusively for years. Now, they're getting some of our pot of money. That's not fair. But the point is, for years, we've been getting away with murder because we have not been spending money on a significant number of students who deserve some kind of support. They just say, good, you know, if you want good education, leave. You don't get any of our support, any of our money. We'll spend the money. We just don't need you as students. Well, now, the students that they're not attracting, those students get some of the cost of the money to support them. It's not a lot. It's under $9,000, and depending on how you, how you measure it, cost per student is somewhere around $21,000 a year totally, all in. So somebody is saving, some taxpayer is saving somewhere around $13,000 a year. Some of it's the state and some of it's the local, but...
I think I got those numbers on what the 25, 26 thing is. And so it's, it's really interesting. It's broken down from like K to three, four to eight, nine to 12, right, Jennifer?
That's correct.
And like K to three, the parents get $8,500 a kid. And then it goes down from there. I think it's like 78 and then 7,500 roughly for the high schoolers. So it's interesting, and it's based on, each county's different. It's, it's, each county has its own range, probably based on how much they tax their families. And it's, you know, I liken it that the, the state is literally fulfilling its constitutional mandate for the public's education, not public education institutions, but the public's education.
Right, the homeschool moms, the homeschool families benefit from it as well. Yeah.
I made that point at the board meeting at the end. I said, look, I'm not a supporter of public education. I'm a supporter of student education. And if it happens in the public schools, that's great. If it happens in private schools, that's great. Different students learn in different places, but I'm not bigoted, and we shouldn't be biased as to how the students get educated. It shouldn't be about the institution. It should, the institution should be about the education.
That's right. And that was a genius comment. That was a genius comment.
Thank you, thank you.
Now, when we were watching, when I was watching the school board meeting, I know that Moore had mentioned that the new classical curriculum is a pilot program. Can you speak to that, Jen, what he means by a pilot program? Because I thought we were getting a full-fledged, you know, traditional's curriculum. And he's talking about a pilot program, and it just doesn't sound like it's what we were expecting.
So I'm going to give you my two cents, and then I'm going to hand it over to the guys. But what happened is it's called word salad. So what happened was, was the curriculum was not approved properly. So it wasn't properly noticed, it wasn't vetted. You know, I sat on the science adoption committee, and you had to, you know, be under Sunshine. You had to review the material, make recommendations. The school board had to vote on it. So for me, saying it was a pilot program was a way to get around word salad for them not properly getting the curriculum vetted and approved in time for school starting in just a couple of weeks. So I would love to hear what the other guys say, but if you had to have two words from Jennifer Pippin on how that went about, I would say word salad.
Word salad.
It was, it was somewhat outside the parameters of the law. And so they're calling it a program to try and squeeze it within the parameters of the law because they can't kick off the school year, and what is it, week and a half, week, without an approved curriculum, which they planned to do. And so Jackie Rosario raised the issue, pressed the issue during the workshop, talked to the attorney, and the attorney said, well, we, we got to do something about it. So this was the, the solution they came up with to sort of get at the edge of the law until they can get it approved.
And Jackie Rosario has been harping on this since, I believe, November of '24, if I'm not mistaken, brought it up again.
Actually, more like summer of last year.
Yeah, and brought it up. She's been bringing it up for, she brought it up for like four months straight, from November through February. It's like, you got to get this curriculum out here. We have to know what it is because it has to be vetted. Normally, like Jennifer said, when you have curriculums, whether if you're doing math or science, you would, you read like two or three different biology books because that's your wheelhouse, right, Jen, when you did the science?
That's right, and I did Anatomy. Yeah, Anatomy and Physiology Honors, and there was four books for that. So yeah, I mean, it's, it's 2, 3, 400 pages of books, and you have to read all of them and compare. It's, it's, it's crazy. And, you know, with this curriculum. Yeah, if they had two or three contenders for the classical curriculum, you're reading, you know, multiple books for, you know, the elementary age, the middle school age. So yeah, it's, it's a lot. It's definitely a lot.
Yeah, because they're doing K to one and sixth grade. And so there was a middle school and the other grades. And the whole thing is, is you're supposed to be able to do that, and parents are supposed to have input, the educators are supposed to have input. It's a three-month process at a minimum, I think. Because there's also the public hearing, which is automatically 30 days, 28 days, and just to hear before they vote. And so that has to be calculated. So here we have, Jennifer is absolutely right, word salad. And we're having a pilot program, and then they're going to put it out there for comment and then do the public hearing and vote. By then, the semester will be over.
See, and most parents, most people don't even realize what the whole process is. And that's why Jackie was bringing it up way back because she knew the length of time it takes to go through all of this and to get everything approved and then to order your books. And, and there's like all these moving parts, you know, before it gets to the classroom. And I was listening to it, and he mentioned Singapore math. I'm like, what is Singapore math? I never heard of that. Do you know what that is?
Yeah, we used it in my school in New York, and it, Manhattan was an exceptional math program. It comes out of Singapore. The student, the math students in Singapore, like, were outstanding and excelled. And so people discovered that fact and the process that they used, and that, that process has become a curriculum that's very popular and successful.
And what grade levels, what grade levels tackle that? Is it from first grade up, or is it a certain grade level?
I think it starts at first grade, yes.
Okay, that's good. And I also heard that it's going to have cursive as well.
Not Singapore math, but that's another curriculum.
Yes, there's a writing curriculum, there's a reading curriculum.
So what that means is, parents will no longer be able to write notes to each other without the kids being able to read it.
The kids can read our founding documents, so one way.
That's right. The Declaration of Independence again.
I really liked hearing that was, cursive was coming back. I was like, oh, the secret penmanship is coming back, you know? Some kids are going to be able...
Writing, yes.
Yeah, some, some kids are going to be able to write like their parents now.
And this is really significant, Joanne, because there's already a waiting list. You know, think about it, Pelican Island Elementary was at about 55% full. A school in our county has to have at least 80% of the seats taken for it to break even in budgetary concerns. And this thing was running at 50, 55% for years. And so now we have a waiting list, and I think as it goes along, it's going to progress into, it will always have a waiting list, and it should be 100% by the time you get two, three, four, and five put in there, and seven and eight as well.
Yeah, so it's, it's a lot of good stuff coming our way. It's not coming perfectly the way we wanted it, but baby steps. We have to take what we can get, right?
That's right. Especially in the past five years. My goodness, let's do it, you know?
I know. And then we've got the new education commissioner. And how do you guys think that's going to affect, you know, have an influence on what goes on with the teachers' unions, how the teachers respond, and, and, you know, because DEI, it was being pushed by the teachers' unions, SRT, all that stuff. So this is really, I think it's good news. What do you think, Kevin? How do you feel about that?
He's, he's come out swinging. I saw his letter, and I was blown away. Bold, brave, and, and just to the point in pony punches. He, he said the right things. He's steering things in the right direction. He, it's, you know, it's sort of like a DeSantis. It's like, you're sort of stunned to see somebody politically have the courage and the boldness to say and do those things. But so his start has been nothing short of amazing. I think you get great things from him. And, and what happens is, as I said to the board on Monday night, I said, even if you got somebody really good, who's, who's successful like Dr. Moore, it has been, and it is currently, you still have to have oversight. Because as soon as you let that oversight down, they let their guard down and they get sloppy. So in this case, he's raising the bar for all the school districts. And so you not only have the good superintendents like Dr. Moore, who are being successful, but the other ones are going to feel the pressure, and they're going to start toeing the line as well.
Yeah, I wanted to just throw a little, a little video of, in case our viewers don't know who Anastasio is. Here he is. Let's show him to our viewers.
The teachers' union at the national level over the past few years has been very concerning. For example, last year, 4th of July, as we were all celebrating with our families, our nation's founding, you had the teachers' union, that same week, hosting a conference. The NEA starts putting out these agenda items. Some of them are supporting, supporting these pro-Hamas terrorist agendas. Some of them are supporting open borders. They're supporting, you know, social unrest, labor strikes, the list goes on. It's pure ideology. And then we saw what was unveiled this year around the same time through the American Federation of Teachers and Randy Weigarten, where there were resolutions that went forward. And some of these resolutions, as you look at them, it's very concerning what's being pushed at the national level. The push of pronouns in schools, the push of boys playing in female sports, pushing boys entering female locker rooms or female bathrooms. Even this climate change crisis that was peddled and cited by the teachers' union and this new partnership with what I call the Woke Economic Forum, not the World Economic Forum, who's pushing an agenda that now they're going to start creating a national curriculum to be imposed on our students. That's just totally inappropriate, and it's not going to happen here in the state of Florida.
He's just so straightforward, you know?
Well, and I think, yeah, I think for so long, people were, you know, especially under the Biden administration, I think people weren't feeling like they were going to be supported. I feel like people wanted to do things, and they wanted to be bold, and they wanted to take these steps. But, I mean, look at federal judges now blocking laws that Florida have put in. So I think that we're starting to kind of turn the corner, in my opinion, where these people who, you know, have big, you know, dreams and ambitions and know right from wrong and have good morals and values, they're actually allowed to, you know, take action on this where I feel like in the past four years, that really hasn't happened.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, a lot of people were afraid to say anything or to fight, you know, to say, hey, that's wrong, you know? I'm not going to do that. It's, it's, this is, this is great because I feel like we're getting a more conservative, a DeSantis, you know, supporter. It's, he's going to keep moving this agenda forward, which is what we need for our kids. We need it for Florida. And I'm excited about it. How do you feel about it, Kevin?
Well, I think, I think for the longest time, we keep moving aside and making more and more space, giving a wider and wider lane to those who have a very dramatically different and radical view of life. And they were never happy with whatever lane we made space for them. They want to completely shut off our lane. And he's come back in, and as DeSantis has and others have, and they said, no, you know, you can live your life, but you're not going to impose your life on us. You're not going to impose your, your worldview on us, and we're, we're going to, we're going to go back to a balanced situation where we respect people, we treat people equally, but we also don't bias for or against certain classes of people, certain groups of people. It must be a horrible thing to be a member of a union, and particularly a union like the teachers' union, where a large number of them are, their money's being used for things that they are diametrically and morally opposed. That's just not right. You can have the second view, but it's just not right to take my money and use my organization to impose something I don't agree with.
And it's created a huge divide among students, racial divide. I mean, we're seeing it now in different cities where people are getting attacked. I mean, all of that, and it's coming from organizations like the teachers' union. And, and it's horrible to think that in education, someone who's so involved with education and raising our kids to learn to be good examples, to be compassionate, to understand society. It's turning them against society. It's turning them against our nation. It's turning them against people. It's, it's just setting us backwards in a sense, you know? Because our kids are no longer innocent.
And it's creating a lot of elected officials who just start having attitudes. So you go back to the voucher thing, and Peggy Jones has been running around going, you know, since the, the DeSantis administration's been giving this money to parents so they can get their kids educated as they see fit, getting the public's education done. She says, well, now we're on an uneven playing field. I mean, arrogance is that.
Well, she's right. The uneven playing field is that the level of their education sucked. And so the private schools and the Brooklyn schools were doing a much better job, and also they weren't imposing their worldview on their children. So we've gotten better at the education. This year, it's going to be a real telling year because if we're number five in the state...
I mean, the thing is, is she's like, it's an uneven playing field because they took our money. And it's like, people have been paying taxes, and then they had to pay the full freight for education because they knew what you were giving them wasn't the expectation of the citizen.
It wasn't good.
Like, that gave them that expectation. And, and then when you take the money away, she's like, oh, now we're on an uneven playing field. You're starting out with a $418 million deposit to run 21 schools. So that's basically 20 million a school.
So Thomas, ask, ask yourself what she means by that. What she means by that is she's not complaining that the students are leaving. All she cares about is the money for the institution. It isn't about student education. It's about the public education institution. And that's all they care, is more money for the institution. And that's all they care, is more money for the institution and, and for the teachers who, you know, God bless them. But if we lose another two hundred, four hundred students next year and we're number five in the state, that's gonna say a lot. Because before it was people leave to go to a better, a better school, get a better education. But if they're still leaving and your public schools are giving a good education, then there's something beyond reading and writing arithmetic. It's that, that, yeah, it's trust, it's, it's the moral values, it's the principles, it's the character, it's logic and reason. You know, so they're gonna, they're gonna have to step up their game because it's gonna be hard to explain if we're number one next year in the state, but we're losing students. That'll be hard to explain.
Well, you know, the positive side to the grades that we're seeing at our school system is that some of these grades are beating the charters. There's some reading grades that are beating the charters, there's some math grades, there's some civics grades by schools. There's pockets that are doing really well against charters. There's others that are even or below. But the point of all that is, is that, you know, it's like I said at the school board meeting, you guys gotta remember how you're being graded. You're being assessed by other public school systems. You're being assessed by Hillsboro that still can't get rid of gender queer.
That's true.
Out of their library. I mean, you know, and, and they're getting recommendations from curriculums that they purchase. So the curriculum companies like, this is a great school system. Well, yeah, they just spent millions and millions of dollars buying your books. Of course you're gonna get more write-up.
But you made a point that the charters are not doing well and that, that says a lot, you know, because charters are usually.
It's, you know, it's, it works both ways, but you're, they were lower this year for sure.
But you know, Moore has been working really hard too. So, and, and it just goes to show that all his hard work is starting to pay off.
And a shout out to the rest of his staff as well. He's got some really good people there.
Well, yeah, and I liked his, his, the hat, the white cowboy hat thing, you know, it's always important to let your staff know because those people are working hard. Just watching the NAACP meetings, they have to do their day job and now they have to do another job to prepare all this stuff for this CRT NAACP initiative. And, and they're getting stalmated all the time. They can't move forward. And he really, it, it made me happy to see him pass the hat joyfully and be playful. And I, I would like to see more of that because I know they work hard. You know, I worked for the school district myself and there's a lot of really good teachers, educators that love kids. They work overtime, you know, they're there for the kids. It's just, you know, the, the atmosphere and how society has been lately and through the years, you know, Moms for Liberty, what would we do without you guys, you know, because someone was out there fighting for the kids. And your courage is what brought everybody out. And now we see the change. It's, it's happening. And I just really enjoyed that when I saw that.
And one of the big changes is that discipline where Jen, you know, when those Moms for Liberty got on there and took out all that restorative justice nonsense and, and went back to the basics of discipline. We always knew that the talented teachers were there, that Moore had great staff in the, in the classrooms. We always knew that. They just needed to be freed up. And the way to do that is have disciplined classrooms. So they can free up and use that talent and be effective. And that's what's happened here.
Yeah.
And it, it, there should be a shout out for the whole cell phone policy, which I think Moms was, was instrumental in driving. But throughout the state now and the country, people are, are trying to adopt that same, particularly Florida because it's now a requirement. But they're trying to learn how to adopt it, which we did early because it was to a degree forced on them. But it was obvious. If you give a child a toy, how much learning does it give them? You know, we've got our toys, how much do we get done with those things that are in our hands? So that's, that's made a big difference. That alone, I think, has made a big difference in improving education.
Absolutely. I mean, that was one of the biggest changes on the code of conduct. And Indian River Schools implemented it before the Florida law became a law. And, you know, and like you said, if they have a toy, they're gonna be playing with it. If they're distracted, you know, so many of these children are addicted to their phones and they're distracted and they're not paying attention to the teacher and their teaching and learning's not going on if they're on their cell phone, right? So it just made common sense. It just made sense to say, listen, not during instructional time, children should not be on their phone without permission. So, you know, there is some like CNA classes and things like that where they go on their phone and they chart and do things like that. But, you know, if you're in history class, you don't need to be on your phone. If you're in math class, you don't need to be on your phone. And it's made a huge change in the discipline, so much so that Dr. Moore said they're thinking about shutting down the ALTOSS, which is the alternative to out-of-school suspension for people who don't know. So basically, you get out-of-school suspension, you can go to this facility in Vero by the high school, by the Flik, and they're talking about possibly shutting it down because they cannot get the enrollment in there to justify keeping it open. So again, as much as people like to say, you know, Moms for Liberty, they're bigots, they're not doing anything, they hate teachers, they hate education. Well, the ALTOSS is about to get shut down because of the code of conduct that the Moms for Liberty, who hates everybody, sat on the committee. So make it make sense, right?
And, and that's one of the big things that Stassi, the ed commissioner, was talking about. How the unions are holding up the funds, the $5 billion for the teachers. They're not, they're not allowing it to roll through. And that was one of the big points in his letter. Other than what happened up there in Alusia County. Is that how you say it? Alachua? Alachua?
Alachua.
Gainesville, for, Gainesville, for those who are not from around here.
So, guys, let's hold it right here. Everyone, stick around. We're going to tap into the local city council updates after this commercial break. Oh, I'm not the commercial break, guys.
Foundation is here to unite, honor, and provide support for veterans, first responders, and Gold Star family members. The foundation will enable them to find the help they need through direct assistance or by connecting them with our shared vision network. Using data-driven models, we provide solutions that make a long-lasting difference. We, along with our partners, are dedicated to bringing together like-minded groups and individuals who have committed to making a difference in the lives of our hard-working, everyday heroes. We bridge the gap by connecting warriors or their families with the assistance they deserve and require such as service dogs, wheelchairs, counseling, scholarships, and team-building retreats, to name a few. You can help right now to make a difference for those who have helped and protected us all. Warrior Shield Foundation, selflessly doing for those who need it most.
Welcome back, everybody.
Hey, Joanne!
Hey, hey, hey. So listen, we have a little more city council news. What's that noise, guys?
I, I was moving my laptop, so that might be it.
Yeah, so we have a little more city council news. Let me pull that up for you.
Right, is all ages to a certain point in the evening. I've stated this again and again and again. Perhaps it shouldn't have said all ages on the flyer for the whole time.
If given the chance to do that event over, would you have done anything different?
No, I'm gonna do it next year too. It's gonna happen. You know, it's gonna happen next year too.
Mayor would like to say something and then we'll, then we'll start.
Wow, okay. Well, there have been some questions about the practices of Kilted Mermaid concerning drag queens and children. Every year, we have a gay pride event. Every year, it is a family-friendly event until the drag show starts, at which time we transition to a later-at-night, more adult portion. Now, in previous years, it has been a situation where parents don't necessarily want to leave when the show starts. They, they don't mind being there for a drag show. And at Kilted Mermaid, we are a firm believer in parental rights. So we have made our first show of every drag, every gay pride event more family-friendly. There is no profanity, there's no nudity, no one's stripping, there's nothing like that going on. Now, later in the night, when it's only adults only, whatever happens is what happens. It has been a situation where parents don't necessarily want to leave when the show starts. They, they don't mind being there for a drag show. And at Kilted Mermaid, we are a firm believer in parental rights.
Didn't she just say that when it gets later on, whatever happens, happens?
Happens.
And she supports parental rights for her parents who don't want to leave and they want to stay. Did I just hear that?
That's, that's, and I have to ask you, Jen, as the local champion, superwoman for parental rights, has she ever supported parental rights at any other topic before this?
Absolutely not, because she's benefiting from this, from the, the parents staying there and drinking with their, with their minor children at a live adult performance. She has never, she does not support Moms for Liberty or parental rights at any capacity unless it helps her pocketbook.
So you're saying she's being disingenuous and hypocritical?
Oh, she's absolutely being a hypocrite. You can't say, oh, parental rights, and show your child pornography. You can't say, oh, parental rights, and not feed your kid. You can't say, oh, parental rights, and you don't shelter your child and take care of your child. So for her to say, oh, we believe in parental rights, we can have minor children at live adult performances, she's absolutely being a hypocrite.
Right.
Sexual abuse is not a parental right.
That is correct. Yeah, child exploitation of adult entertainment is, is not a parental right.
Well, let's see a little more, let's see a little more of this city council.
A little more?
So, in my opinion, and in the opinion of Kilted Mermaid, there is no difference between a man in a dress lip-syncing a song or a woman in a dress lip-syncing a song. There is not one, one issue that's somehow pornographic and the other one is not. For those of you who think that, well, that's a you problem, but it's not against the law. I am so proud of it. I am just as proud of that as I am of the job I do up here on this dais where I represent the community, all of the community.
In my opinion, I am deeply disappointed that children would be in attendance of this. I don't think it has anything to do with hating people. It has nothing to do with bigotry. It has everything to do with protecting our children and making sure that they are raised with the values and the virtues that obviously built our country and I believe formed the fabric of our community here.
For those of you who think that, well, that's a you problem.
She sure, she sure is representing all of the community, isn't she?
Right. I, I felt so represented there.
Yeah. I represent all of you who agree with, all of you who agree with me and the rest of you go to hell.
Right. Yeah, if you're not LGBTQ, get out of my council room. Right, exactly.
And I loved when the priest came up and talked because he made some very valid points, you know, and.
That's Father, that's Father Matthew de Gantz from St. Helens.
St. Helens.
Oh, okay.
That's right. And he also made another point. Let's, let's have some more city council points.
Against the law.
John Adams, our second, very, sadly not very illustrious president, at least in history. I disagree with that. Will make America thrive, a practice of private moral virtue and the rule of law.
For those of you who think that, well, that's a you problem.
I love that you keep saying that.
That's gonna be stuck in my head tonight.
I think Linda Moore has a you problem.
If you think that, that's a you problem.
That's an attitude that the people who want a wider and wider lane, they take. It's get out of my way. I don't care if this used to be your lane. Get the heck out of my way. And for those who aren't familiar with this whole issue, they should recognize that, first of all, that show, that adult show was in an area not zoned for adult shows. It has to be in an area, an industrial area. That show was put on about less, about a thousand feet from a school and 500 feet from apartments. That's not legal. That's a zoning issue. And, and fortunately, a council member, Taylor Dingle, brought that fact up and hopefully they will actually investigate that fact. So, so that's just one point. That's a legal issue. But then there's also the moral issue. And most people understand that it's just not moral to, to have children involved with this. She identified that it's not moral. She said, you know what, we, we have it for the adults and then we changed, switched over, but the kids didn't leave. And the kids were still there and they've got video of the kids still there. And, you know.
And then she contradicted herself when she said, well, when the parents, you know, sometimes they don't want to leave, but then we, she went to the parental rights thing because she's trying to steal, well, I shouldn't say that.
It was a smokescreen.
It kind of deflects from what Moms for Liberty does. Moms for Liberty is all about parental rights.
She's trying, she's trying to appeal to people with common sense and confuse them. And, and try and, try and for a moment make it seem like this is an issue for parents where, this is one of those few moments that having children at pornographic shows really is not a parent, parental right. You know, because that's a child abuse.
Right.
Yeah, it's really funny because she's like, oh, other men are dressing in a dress and singing, lip-syncing a song or what? Neither one of them were lip-syncing, number one. They were running around doing posing and collecting dollar bills. And then, you know, one of them stripped down to their underwear and did all of that in front of teenagers, right, Jen?
That's right. There was a table of teenage boys, yep.
Pictures don't lie, you know? Our eyes are not deceiving us. I, I, I just don't, and then she goes, I don't find it pornographic. Well, she did not find that shot that you, you've presented to the AG of that mystery haga in her underwear doing what she was doing in front of the boys. And she doesn't find that pornographic.
Well, that's the problem.
And that's a you problem for me, by the way.
Well, that's the problem. It's bad enough that a business person is doing this in an area of the city that should not be doing it. But this is a vice mayor and she thinks that being vice mayor.
She's in charge of vice, all right.
Yeah, she's in charge of vice and she certainly is. And that's, that's just not appropriate for, for, for a, a person who's supposed to represent, if you're representing all the community, I can tell her, a very large portion of the community does not agree with this, does not want this. They certainly don't want this next to a, a school and next to apartments and in a place where it's not zoned right with, with children there. And she should, she should know better.
Well, let's see some more city council residents.
This is hitting away at that fabric of private moral virtue and I believe this conversation is worth having. And it's not about calling those of us who strongly disagree with it as bigots and hatred and want to push people into corners. That's not true.
For those of you who think that, well, that's a you problem. So if any of you were gonna come up here and ask me to resign from my job as Vice Mayor of the City of Vero Beach, spoiler alert, it's not actually gonna happen.
I come before you with not malice, but serious concern over the actions of Vice Mayor Linda Moore, whose behavior has consistently crossed the lines of decency, public standards, and civic responsibility. Since Mrs. Moore took office, there's been a disturbing pattern of conduct that does not reflect the values, moral, or ethical standards of the majority of this community. First, there was an incident last year in April when Mrs. Moore publicly called for people to bring used, used sex toys, specifically dildos, to a restaurant for collection.
For those of you who think that, well, that's a you problem.
Most outrageously, Mrs. Moore hosted live adult performances last month at her restaurant, The Kilted Mermaid. These events were promoted as all ages, meaning minor children, were knowingly exposed to explicit adult-themed performances. This is not acceptable by any community standard. There is currently a criminal complaint filed of these events to the Attorney General's Office and our local law enforcement, and rightly so. These violations should result in the loss of her liquor licenses and ultimately her removal from office. Why is there a need for adult entertainers to perform in the presence of minor children?
For those of you who think that, well, that's a you problem.
Mrs. Moore, you no longer deserve the honor of representing this community. Therefore, I respectfully but firmly ask you to resign your position on this council. Your continued presence, like today, is a distraction, much division, and a disturbance, excuse me, disservice to the people who elected you. Thank you.
For those of you who think that, well, that's a you problem.
Our actions matter. They reflect not just on us as individuals, but on the office we hold, the people we represent, and the legacy of those who came before us. This is not about Kilted Mermaid. This is not about drag shows. We live in a country built on freedom. What this is about is how we, as a community, address uncomfortable questions that challenge our values, our public spaces, and how we define what is appropriate, especially in areas like the downtown district. I take no pleasure in asking this, and it pains me too, but is it appropriate for individuals, male or female, to appear nearly nude and perform acts that could be described as lewd or adult in nature in venues? in venues such as within our downtown area? What kind of community do we want to be? What's appropriate in terms of content, age and location? How should businesses and citizens help shape those expectations? And should this be a case reviewed by our code enforcement if it did violate section 67.06 in our city charter? I'm here to do the people's work and I must be the voice for the city residents, business owners, neighbors and families who've reached out to me with serious concerns about what took place. One of those voices was former mayor, Tony Young. So Tony, I took up two minutes of your time there. So you have eight.
First of all, I'd want to say, um, thank you for, uh, the opportunity to speak. Uh, Linda, I have voted for you twice and, and you bring special talent to this community. This is a, this is my home and this is, this means a great deal to me. But, um, the, the shock is the right word to me was when my family was here in celebration for the 100th anniversary for a county and here for the 4th of July. Um, I was provided, uh, images and videos that I thought was extremely disturbing. And I didn't want to respond without context. And so that began an effort for me to do homework across the board to see the nature of what, um, I was attempting to understand. And so I reached out to community leaders and, and people that I know and I asked, is this something, you know, should I skip it, move forward or just, or should we, uh, address this?
Now, this is the previous mayor. He went and did his own research amongst the community. And that's what brought him here to address it at the city council.
I love that.
You know, I, I love it too because he's, he, he even says, look, I see the value that you bring to the city, but you're crossing the line is what he's saying. And so I thought this was very compelling to hear him because you could hear his emotion and how much he cares about this community.
And clearly the input back to me was, yes, this was important. I looked at the faith communities that I have trust in and that I know. And the faith communities unequivocally said, yes, this is a concern for us. And then following that, I said, well, you know, I'm not an attorney. I don't know the, the code. I can't interpret the code. But to have, um, what I see to be a, a cabaret type performance at the conclusion of the day when there is no protections for those under 18 seems to be at least skirting the, this, uh, city code or in violation.
For those of you who think that, well, that's a you problem, but it's not against the law.
Looking at the input to the, by the community in regards to the state law, the state law clearly was, is on hold. It's not applicable. I regret that. So my
There's a whole conversation.
My request to the council is simply very straightforward. I think that the community expects that there should be an understanding that in these forms of entertainment, that the law or the age requirement be applicable. And, and Linda, um, for the
See, I, I, that was so, so good. I loved it when he came on because I'm like, he's also showing support for you, Ms. Moore, but at the same time, he's saying, look, we have a community here that is concerned about this. It's a moral, um, it's morally wrong, you know, without saying it's morally wrong. But he's mentioning, you know, these are 18 year olds that are people under 18 that are not being protected.
And his rant, for people who don't know, he's been at Vero Beach forever. His, was a great grandfather, was the first mayor. So this is somebody who's, who, who is caring about knowing what's going on in the community and trying to look out for all members of the community. Unlike Ms. Moore, he actually is trying to represent them all.
Right. And on the record, I just, I just want to say again, you know, this is nothing against Linda Moore as a person. She does have the votes to be a city council member. She does have the love of the arts community. She does have the love of the LGBTQ community. Absolutely. The problem is, is we're holding her accountable as an elected official and this is a pattern of events. So I wish I would have had more time to speak. I would have brought up the fact that she said that, you know, the, the law enforcement was riding around with ICE and the racial profiling and things like that. That was not true. It's like, it seems like over the past year and a half, right, year and a half. She's had these patterns where she has, you know, lied or not been given good information, asking for used sex toys at a restaurant, having these, so it's a pattern. So at what point do you say, okay, well, I'm going to turn a blind eye and something's going to happen worse or, you know, we're not going to hold her accountable as an elected official? I mean, it is an honor to serve on a city council or a board or county commissioner or a school board. I mean, it is an honor to do that. You are there for the people. And when you are habitually making wrong decisions over and over and over again, you know what? I'll take the brunt any day and say, you know what? Enough is enough. We need to protect the children. We need to keep the used sex toys out of, you know, restaurants where families are dining and enough's enough. So that's why we're, you know, petitioning, you know, to, you know, I knew she wasn't going to resign, you know, I knew she wasn't going to resign because she's still to this day, doesn't think she's done anything wrong. You look at her GoFundMe, there's no mention of minor children being present, hence the complaint, you know, from the AG. She in her mind thinks that she's representing the LGBTQ community. We're bigots. We're attacking her. It's attack on drag queens and that's absolutely not.
Attack on drag queens. It's an attack on the community. They've actually, in their narrative of the story, have removed the whole drag queen incident. You know, and it started, the removal started with the pictures because all of the evidence came from their website.
Right. And you know, TC Palm, yeah, TC Palm says, we had four people in attendance. There was no drag queens when children were there and literally we just spammed that TC Palm article on Facebook with all of the pictures with the drag queens and the kids. I mean, literally they posted it on their Kilted Mermaid page. The drag queens posted it live on their page and everything was scrubbed after we already screen recorded everything and took pictures of everything and submitted it to the AG. So that next morning, when those, you know, videos and pictures were still there, they scrubbed them after they realized they were being, you know.
So wait, so TC Palm printed a verifiable lie?
Yes. Yes.
A verifiable lie.
Well, they wrote it like this, four people say, no children, but so that the truth is, is that
If they were there, they know. If they were actually there.
Kevin, hold on. The truth, the truth of their article is, is that four people say or make the claim. Whether the claim is true or not is irrelevant.
The proof was in the pudding. So Thomas, you, you mentioned in one of your articles, that law that's kind of on hold? What is that? The?
Uh, that's the 2023 Protect Children's Act. Is that how you say it, Jen?
Yeah. Protection of Children's Act.
Yeah. And so it was immediately challenged by Hamburger Mary's, a LGBTQ club in Orlando that did drag shows on Sundays, all age drag shows, family events. And they challenged it and, uh, it was challenged in federal court. And the federal court, the lower court put, uh, an injunction on the law, universal. But the law only applies to the state of Florida. So usually when there's no hearing in a state court, I think we talked about this last week, there's no hearing in a state court, the federal court should refer it back down to at least the Supreme Court may go lower. You know, and the Supreme Court of Florida, that is. And they should certify the case, you know, make a decision on it. And then, uh, they could appeal that at the federal level. Well, they didn't do that. They didn't allow for that to happen. Instead, they put this universal injunction on it. So Department of Hotels and Restaurants, uh, made an appeal at the 11th Circuit against that injunction. The 11th Circuit held the injunction, universal. This was in May, by the way. About, I think it was the second week of May. So this is held. And then they further said that, uh, the term lewd, what, what the state did in their law was, is they wrote out the obscenity statute and then they, then they described basically what a lewd performance is with, uh, with, it's really complicated language, but basically what a drag queen does in a lewd performance. When they get really lewd, like we saw at the Kilted Mermaid.
But was that definition directed to what lewd is for adults? Cause I would think lewd for adults would be different for children.
It's, it's under the Protection of Children Act. So you have to understand about obscenity law. So the Supreme Court has obscenity law, but according to the community standards must be purient and lack artistic values. So most drag shows for the adults are not obscene because they're not totally purient. Uh, there is clothing involved on some level. But when it comes to adult live performances in those obscenity laws at the Supreme Court level, there's consistent in the Miller case, in the Ginsburg case, I think it's the Hamm, Hamm, Hamminger case. I can't remember. It begins with an H. There's consistent language about how the standards for children in the community are completely different for the purpose of protecting children and their innocence. And so on that precedent, the state passed a law that said, and one of the terms they use in, in the, in the Hamminger, I'd have to look it up, but, uh, they use the term, one of them is lewd performance, a lewd, uh, demonstrating lewd acts. And so when the state used this, they used this, uh, language in their definition for, to protect children with all that precedent. And now the appellate court is saying lewd is too ambiguous. And so this is going to be, uh, adjudicated. But here's the thing, they held the universal injunction. Well, in June, what did the Supreme Court do? They overturned universal injunctions. Now this universal injunction is statewide.
So what does that mean when they overturn universal injunctions?
So a universal injunction, when they say universal, that means it applies to everyone. The law cannot be in effect. Normally an injunction is for the person who brings the case. So in this case, Hamburger Mary's gets an injunction and it applies to them. So they can carry on with their family, uh, drag shows while their case is being adjudicated. But for the rest of the community in the whole state, the law is still in effect and applies. It's universal. It stops for everyone. So my question is, this is just my question. If this was decided at a federal level and then the Supreme Court overturned universal injunctions, why isn't it overturned in the state?
It is. It is.
But no one is saying that and we're like, we're living under the reality of it.
Yes. We, we, we're, we're living under lawlessness because the Supreme Court defined the law. And they're thinking, well, I don't care what the law is, you know, and it's, it's lawless judges in this case. The judges.
Othmeyer would, would, would understand that and, and, and say
Who would?
Othmeyer, our AG, say, hey, I, maybe I'm missing something. I'm just, I'm posing the question because I don't know the answer to this little conundrum that has, well, A, we had universal injunctions in June and we don't.
Well, what happened is the judicial, judicial system has created a constitutional issue because the Supreme Court has said that you can't do this. But the local, uh, uh, federal judges are continuing to do what the Supreme Court said you can't do.
Well, this has to stop because they're just, they're out of, they're out of control.
That's exactly it. Yeah. They're, they're, they're running, they're running, uh, outside of the constitution of the law.
Yeah. I mean, how sad is it? How, how sad is it? We even have to have a law that says that minor children should not be present for live adult performances? Like how sad is that, that we have to have a law that says that? I mean, I think anybody, you know, should, should, should understand that, you know, children shouldn't be at a Magic Mike show. They shouldn't be at a Topless Tina show. They shouldn't be at a drag queen show where there's inappropriate adult live performances going on, period, full stop. I mean, it's, it's sad that we have to even discuss this.
And furthermore, how sad is it that we've got elected officials who claim to represent all of the community, but they completely ignore and dismiss and says, it's your problem. If you, if you disagree with me, if you have a different viewpoint, if you have different moral values, I'm not going to, you don't get a lane. You don't get a lane. We're going to do this. We're going to do it down Main Street and you're not allowed to even use Main Street if you don't want to agree with us. That's the whole, their whole position is you don't get an argument. You don't get a lane. They're going to do whatever they want. And she is, she is, she is going to recommend, she, she represents all the community that agrees with her.
Right. Yeah.
And that's the problem. The problem is, is not just a bad business person, but you've got someone who is not, they're showing that they're not qualified to represent the whole community.
Well, see, when you have liberal representatives, they're all emotional. Everything's about feeling and emotion. There is no morality. There's, it's, it's what I want, what I feel. And there's nothing wrong with that because that's freedom. That's liberty, you know? And, and they, they push and cross the line. Look at all of our liberal representatives, our, our, our left leaning representatives. They're crossing the line everywhere they can and they just keep pushing the envelope and just
And that's the whole thing.
Yeah.
They, they, they fight saying, give me space, you know, uh, give us, give us these lesbian and gay rights. And people said, all right, you know, you make a case, well, we'll move over and give you a lane. But now they're going, well, you can't have a lane at all. So you, now that I have a lane, it's got to be my lane and, and just as you're saying, Jordan.
It's their, their lane and nobody else's.
My road.
Right. They're the only ones that get to, to, to enjoy the freedom of having their own choice. And it's all about me, 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 what I think. And if you think differently, well, you're shut down.
And elected, our elected officials are the only people who are, who are, who are going to, who have the power and authority to stand up and say, you want this, you want this, we'll find a reasonable, um, middle ground. And Linda Moore specifically saying, if, if you don't, there is no, there is no middle ground. It's our way. And you take that a different highway. That's, that's, that's the stance she's taking. It's, you know, you got a problem. If, 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 if you have a different opinion, if we got moral values, if you have, if you, if you want to protect your children, if you think that you should have some say and some rights in this community, that's your problem. Just her attitude.
It's really sad because she is a good businesswoman. She knows what her clientele wants. She's run a successful business. You know, I've had girlfriends that have gone to the Kilted Mermaid and seen the drag shows and, you know, I've told them about what's happened in Vero Beach. They don't live here. They've actually come out of town to go to, uh, the Kilted Mermaid. And they're like, yeah, it was fun and it was silly, but that's not something kids could be at, you know? But, and, and you would like your representatives to know where to draw the line and, and how to follow the law and be an example of the law, you know?
It's called respect. Respecting one another and saying, you know what? You know, I want this, but how do I do this and respect you? And her attitude is you get no respect.
And nobody, nobody has, yeah, nobody has a problem with the drag queen shows there. Nobody has a problem with the drag queen bingo that they have now, you know, 18 and up. They always have 18 and up on everything except for this one family, you know, family fun pride tee dance or whatever. So literally it's not about the LGBT community or their safe space or like, you know, the, the pastor said with, with, you know, being bigots and things like that. It's having children at these events and you don't see that all in the news. You don't see that in her GoFundMe. So, you know, part of me honestly thinks that she is, you know, trying to create this controversy to raise those funds and to trigger people's emotions and feelings like we're talking about and not the facts, you know, not the facts.
And since you mentioned it, we didn't, we didn't get a chance to talk the most, the latest episode, but all of a sudden 12 packages appeared, being sent supposedly to all the committee, the, the, the city and county officials, but ended up with a return address that went back to her place. And she's, she accused actually Jennifer and Moms for Liberty of sending these packages when she, and claiming to know what's in the packages when she did not get a package apparently herself. She was excluded because there's only four of the county people sent the package and none of the packages are open. City people, four city people, five county people, sheriff, uh, city manager and whatever, a secretary, they all got one. And why would you, why would you send one to her if, if it's, she's the brunt of the joke? But who would put up a joke? One of, first of all, who's got 12 sex toys available that they can go mailing around? Cause she claims that's what's in these packages that were never opened. How would she know? But who's got 12 of them to send around? Maybe somebody who asked for sex toys to be mailed to them last year. Maybe that's the art project that she had in mind.
Well, here's the funny thing.
That's a fair assumption.
I'm going to be reporting on this.
The only reason why.
Kevin, I'm going to be reporting on this because there was a 13th package. There's a baker's dozen. And one, and one got through.
Really? To who?
Got through to the city attorney, John, uh, John Turner. And, uh, you get the police report. So at 13 So at 13:25 hours, says, uh, Officer Brumley on the, I then responded to City Hall in reference to one of the above packages being sent to city attorney. So that was on 7/25, so that would be Friday, right, in our calendar, last Friday?
Yeah.
So I was informed by city clerk Sherry Filo that the city attorney received the package on 7/23. That's the day after the city council meeting.
That's pretty fast.
That mail got there pretty quick. In the morning hours, in the morning hours, he did not open it until the next day in the afternoon hours. The package contained one purple dildo and a letter calling for Linda Moore's resignation. The complainants just want this incident to be documented. Uh, this event was captured by, on my BWC and uploaded to Evidence Library with, along with photos. All sex toys have been entered into evidence, I guess.
What was the postage? What was the postage on that envelope if that one got through and the other ones didn't?
Uh, according to what I see here in the picture, it, it's, I don't see all the stamps, but it looks like there was only eight of them. Now, here's the letter, because Jennifer, you want to speak to this? The letter says, and it's blank, by the way, there's no, it's not from anybody, it's just a piece of paper written in the same font that's on the, uh, mail messages. It's your, and, uh, um, Joanne, if you want to, you can pull up my article and you can see that the package is there. It's your duty as a leader in this county, this is to who it's ever addressed to, which was commissioners or city council members and, uh, city manager, city clerk, and of course, John Turner. It's your duty as a leader in this county to demand Linda Moore's resignation. Next paragraph, her reckless behavior exposing underage children to drag shows is completely unacceptable. She should not hold any office in Indian River County. That's all it says. And it was received at the city's clerk's office on 7/23. And, uh, and there's a note on here, police officers picked up a original package and put it into evidence, Sherry Filo. So, and the very next day, now, Jennifer, they claimed you guys wrote it.
Right. So, so for the record, um, yeah, and I know, you know, you, you put out an article on this so they can check it out at the Sunshine Journal, but, um, we put out a public statement, so I put it out myself and as Moms for Liberty, that said that we had absolutely nothing to do with this. And, uh, we are very transparent with everything we do. We do not do fake mail, we do not do fake emails, we do not make fake profiles. We are very transparent, um, as an organization, and I'm very transparent as the person who filed this. I literally put my phone number, my address, my email address, everything on the complaint. It wasn't anonymous, it was full transparency. Um, so again, we put out a public statement that said we had absolutely nothing to do that, with this. If you look at the comments on Linda Moore's, um, page, she blames Moms for Liberty in her comment, and all the comments are absolutely disgusting after that. It is trashing Moms for Liberty, it is trashing me, it is trashing my husband, and we, again, had absolutely nothing to do with this. Moms for Liberty didn't even file the complaint. So all of these people who are having selective outrage about this, this has nothing to do with Moms for Liberty. I filed it as a private citizen, I've said that publicly, I've said that to the news. Has Moms for Liberty shared the articles that Thomas has written, or shared, you know, things that have been said, you know, by the AG? Absolutely. We share everything across the state that has to do with parental rights, or children, or curriculum, or books. So absolutely, we share what's going on in our town. So, but never has Moms for Liberty ever said that they are responsible for this, or that they did the mailings, you know, without full transparency. It is absolutely false. And again, I think it is her liberal bias agenda to drive outrage, to raise that GoFundMe, written under false pretenses, to garner the support of the people who may not like Moms for Liberty, or now they definitely don't like Moms for Liberty, because she has lied to take their money, um, you know, without full transparency on her part, not ours.
Yeah, there's a lot of groups out there that, that thrive on the victimhood, and then they see somebody put out a, a fun, a GoFund page, and then they, they donate to it, kind of like that young man who stabbed, who killed the other young man, they put out the, uh, GoFund page, and, and the kid was making a ton of money.
They made $400,000 or something in Texas.
Yeah, that was crazy. I couldn't believe it. But that's the victimhood mentality, and people are making money off of that, you know? They're taking money from people because people feel so ingrained in that victimhood mentality. I don't understand it, but it's out there. And I was just surprised to hear that you were being slandered, you know? That's defamation of character without any proof. So again, crossing, again, crossing the line.
Well, that's exactly what she did with the IRCSO when she talked about the, uh, about the sheriff's department supporting ICE. Just made an unfounded statement that just wasn't true.
No, it wasn't.
No factual predicate or anything.
Right, but, you know, the sheriff's office may not be in a position to file a libel suit. First of all, individual might be in the, in a position to file a libel, and should file a libel suit. Now, the interesting, as I rolled through all these things, is it's, when you look at, when you look at what makes sense, there's 12, now 13 packages, I did not see a package labeled to her, I did not see a package that was opened in that picture. All the packages were closed. And all these packages were sent, the materials in this, first of all, she hasn't opened a package, how does she know what's in them? Second of all, who's going to come up with 12, now 13 relatively expensive sex toys, and then put all the post passenger, this is a $300 plus prank? Who's going to go to that trouble? And they're not going to weigh one of the packages to see how much the proper postage should be, so that it would go through? That's the sort of, you don't spend $300 to do 13 things and not get them right.
Well, you could say that they never really had experience mailing sex toys.
Yeah, yeah, but anyone spending that much money would weigh at least one of them just to see, uh, if it, if it fits. There's like $5 with stamps on there. So you don't put $5 with a stamp and say, should it be 550? And you don't mail those, and, and you're mailing out, like I said, hundreds of dollars worth of these toys. And, you know, when it arises, because it had her return address on it, they all revived back at her restaurant, postage due, but she didn't open the package, how does she know what's in the package?
She felt it up.
She may, she may be good at that.
That's a you problem.
But she doesn't, she doesn't know for a fact what's in it without opening it.
Right.
So to make, to make any kind of a claim, somebody might have sent out a fresh batch of cucumbers. She's got no way of knowing until that package is opened. So she didn't get a package.
Turner knows.
Yeah, who, who knows?
The delivery you can eat.
On that note, thanks for joining us for the podcast this evening.
Hey, we don't want to turn this into an adult live performance.
Sorry, guys.
It, it, it does raise a large question as to who actually sent these out.
Yeah.
And, and who had access to, who had, who had access to a dozen or more of these sex toys? Because you usually don't carry a whole suite of them, then, and you, if you buy that many, it's because you want to keep them, you don't go mailing them out, unless maybe you had some kind of performance art project in mind, and maybe this is the performance art.
Maybe it was the person that she was collecting them for way back, when she's mentioned that, uh, she had a friend that had a special project that needed all these dildos, so maybe that's the person that had them.
Yeah, I mean, I, we don't know, we don't know these things, but all the questions are out there on the table, you know, who mailed them, who did them, where did they come from, who has this many? How would you make that kind of mistake? How would she know without opening the envelopes? These are all questions that are left out of the table.
It's all speculation.
Yeah, they're not on the table, by the way, they're in the evidence bay down at the local police.
Well, it's just good. And, and they should be able, they should be able to get, um, fingerprints off that and determine exactly who did this.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, let's get the fingerprints.
I'm glad I'm not a fingerprint specialist today.
Yeah. Well, with that being said, guys, thank you for this great show tonight. I hope our audience enjoyed it, you know? We had a little fun moments, and we had some good topics about the school, our new education commissioner, um, looking forward to this year and seeing where it goes, and having DeSantis in office, and having someone like DeSantis, you know, as education commissioner.
Amen.
All right, uh, let's close it out. I'm going to put you guys back in the green room. Hi, everybody, thank you for joining us here at the Board Report. Another great night of information. Hit the like, share, and subscribe tab to get notified when the Board Report goes live. Remember, the Board Report airs every Friday at 7:00 PM. Visit indianriverconnections.com to stay informed on the latest topics. Again, visit indianriverconnections.com to visit our network of podcasters. And thank you again, and have a great weekend. Good night, everybody.